Zoom and with Rogers and Assist. And we will get this thing underway and hopefully that we're going to get it in before the big storm. So with that, I would ask for an approval of the agenda that the regular council agenda June 10th, 2020. That the agenda of the regular council meeting be approved as presented. Could I have a mover and a seconder councillor Levy and councillor Mayat all in favor? Where are the green cards? Okay, that's good. Moving on to declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has, make it known. If not, we'll get it at the proper time. And move on to the deputizations and presentations. And this evening, we have the pleasure of having the senior of the year presentation. And today I had the pleasure, along with Deputy Mayor, to present Irene Ashworth as the Senior of the Year. We assisted at her web residence on Quay Street with quite a turnout. She had a lot of friends from the museum, friends of the museum, Lions Club. I think there was some there from the committee and it was quite a good turnout. So Irene is originally from Toronto. She was born in England. She spent her summer as a child in tiny township and moved to Penetangwishing when she retired. In the years Irene has lived in Penetangwishing, her volunteer activities have made the town a better place to live. She is an engaged member of the Town of Penetangwishing's Museum and Heritage Advisory Committee, and is an active participant in three key community organizations. Irene is not just a volunteer who shows up for a day. Her level of involvement could be measured on a much larger scale as it includes event planning, organization, and fundraising initiatives as well. The Town of Penetangwishing and its residents greatly benefit from Irene's involvement with the following organizations. Penetangwishing Centennial Museum and the Friends of the Museum, the Penetangwishing Public Library, and the Penetangwishing Lions Club. It is easy to see that Irene Ashworth has been and continues to be capable instrumental of all and brings many years of work experience, ideas, energy to all the tasks that she tackles. She has developed a vast pipeline of contacts through activities. She works well with others as well as individually. She is a great supporter of our community events, social and cultural. She does the mundane as well as the glory task and we are thrilled that she has chosen to call Penetangwishing home. So Irene, again, congratulations. And when things get back to what we hope would be some kind of norm, we will redo this at a time, hopefully, within chambers. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And now we will move on to Don Chapman, the Terry Fox 2020 40th anniversary of Terry's Marathon of Hope. So Stacy, if you want to assist Don with that, kindly do so.
Yes, Stacy's gonna drive for me. Just one second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councils, for giving me a few minutes to update you on what we've done. Looking back for a minute, we'll look back at what we've accomplished last year and I'm gonna take you forward and kind of share our plans for this year with you in the next few minutes. And I'll end on the note of how you can help us make this a dazzling success again this year. Stacy, can you go ahead, please? Thanks. This is my usual talking proud kind of slide. We last year made $104,000 in a day for cancer research and I think we should all be very, very proud of that. That was despite some rain. We think we probably could have squeezed another few thousand on a sunny day. But we should take acknowledgement that we're 11th in Ontario in total revenue contributed, which is sites that are much, much bigger than us are not contributing as much as this town is. Very generous community here. We've almost doubled our contribution since 2014, like incredible. And we're over $2 million bucks since we began. We had 844 runners despite the rain, so that was a good, very good turnout. And we introduced more food. I always figure food is a big attractor. So we introduced a lot of food last year and it went over great. Everything was used, including, I must acknowledge, the Penetangwishing Rotary Club cooked and served 500 hot dogs for us, which was great of them to do. Sold a lot of shirts and made some good money. So that's what we're trying to do bigger and better again this year. Stacy, we can go forward, please? There it goes slowly. Just after every one of these runs that we do, and I've been in the chair's role now for five years, I guess, we do a lessons learned, look back and say what went well. And I've got to say this year, everything went well, but the weather, we couldn't really control that. We're trying to take that over, but we haven't managed it yet. But really, to every single element of the thing, it really, really went well this year. I hope you would agree if you were there to see it. And we had incredible plans and anticipation setup of ways we could blow, build on this base even more and have an incredible event this coming year. Then along came this thing called the virus and changed things for us a little bit. We'll keep going forward. I'll talk more about that in a second. So what we're going to do this year is because of the virus, at the Canadian level, a decision has been made that we are not going to have a great big gathering of 800 to 1,000 people running and sweating and talking to each other. We just can't do that. We're gonna have to live with the public health guidelines. We're going to embrace them. When I wrote this chart, it was no gatherings greater than five. I'm glad to hear we can maybe change that to 10 now. We're going to still have a big celebration about Terry's legacy. This is the 40th anniversary of his Marathon of Hope. And we're going to celebrate the giving nature of our community. This year, we had a whole lot less events that we can collaborate with because virtually every other large event that we used to kind of partner with has been canceled, unfortunately. We are really going to soften our focus and we'll talk more about it in a second on money. This is a year when what I'd like to do is focus on participation more than monetary contribution. It's been a tough year for a lot of businesses and people who are unemployed and we just don't feel like we can push for money at the current time. We won't turn it down, but we won't drive anybody crazy for it. And we're gonna, I'll talk a little bit more about this dispersed kind of approach in one second. Stacy, please? I didn't have a joke ready for this one. It's very slow right now, eh? Oh, here we go. Okay. I just mentioned a minute ago that we're gonna be sensitive about the money. There's people hurting. And my notion is I'd rather have 50,000 people give two bucks than just a much smaller population giving more. If we can spread this out and we've got nearly 45,000 people, if I just do raw head counts in the four communities that we kind of serve, wouldn't it be nice if we could get a whole pile of them, not just 864? Let's get thousands out and everybody give a tuna. It'll be magic. So just you'll note that tone when you see communications coming out. Okay, Stacy? So this is really what the elements of this year's program are. We are gonna have Terry Fox Day in the heart of Georgian Bay. One feature of it is going to be an event and it won't be a run. It'll be anything but a run, really. The theme that the National Office has come up with is one day your way. And what it is, is a run, but you wake up on that Sunday morning, put on your Terry Fox shirt, go outside your own door, run, crawl, bike, whatever you want to do, as far or as short as you want. Do it alone or do it in small groups, whatever's the law at that point in time. And then cheer on your neighbors, cheer on your friends that are also out there on the street, hopefully at the same time as you, and make a small contribution to the Terry Fox Foundation sometime on that day. So I used to call this, my concept is called the un-run. It's a run with no discipline in it and not necessarily any runners. But other than that, we're gonna have a nice event together. Over to the left-hand side, you can see community-led events. We're trying to get approximately 40 events going on that are complementing that run activity. I've already approached several organizations and we're gonna do things like car rallies and roadside cleanups and Silver Fox walks. We've got a couple of those lined up, a corn roast. There's gonna be small events that we, my team is not going to try and design them. We're not trying to oversee them. We're gonna promote the heck out of them and just try and get a whole lot of Terry Fox related activity happening, not only on the 20th, but in the weeks leading up to the 20th. So that will be another element of the program. You may have seen recent notes from Adidas where they introduced the Terry Fox line of running shoes and sports equipment. And they are contributing all of the net profits from that to the Terry Fox Foundation, which is huge. It sold out in no time and there will be additional supplies and products added to that, to that sale as well. That money does not come into our local coffers, unfortunately. It goes into the National Office directly because it's all online sales. We will locally be doing lots of shirt sales leading up to the run event as well. We hope you'll all be part of that as well. So that's kind of the four big elements of this year's program. Very different than what we've done in the past. Okay, Stacy? So we're trying to grow again. We've got a lot of national programs and materials this year. We've got some new communities that we haven't touched before. For example, Georgian College have come in and said they want to run a car rally. They think it's gonna be great. I've got another group that's very interested in doing the world's biggest car wash. And we'll see. I can lie about that. We'll call it the world's biggest car wash. We're gonna have signage everywhere. We really heightened our focus on social media this year. We brought on two or three people with that skill who volunteered their time to really up the focus there. And a great focus on teams and those peripheral events. So that's how we're gonna grow. Stacy? And then what I'm asking of you is make this your program. Get involved, be part of it. I would love to see it if you folks will promote us, everything we're doing through all the media channels you've got. It would be terrific if you had your own fundraising event that this council is leading their own fundraising event. The activity is your choice, whatever you want to do, as long as it sticks to the health guidance, we're fine with it. There will be a contribution tracking app that will roll out soon. This will be like a Fitbit. It'll say, hey, I'm gonna run 10,000 steps for Terry today. Okay, it will track that and celebrate that with you. It will also roll up any revenue donations that we get. If you want to see the view for Penetang, where you want to see the, the results for Penetang Council or Penetang Rotary, it'll all be able to do that instantaneously. If you're gonna run, have an event, I would love it if you buy t-shirts and wear them around the days of the event of the run itself. I have talked to the other three councils in the area and they're all going to have a Terry Fox Day in council and wear all of their new Terry Fox shirts to that day. I'd love it if you would do that as well. And then my last ask is be with us on September the 20th. We'd love to see your faces wherever you are. I hope to run into you. And if it's legal, I'd love to high five with you. That's all my ask this year. Very simple. Okay, Stacy? This is just my offer to, if you choose to do something, and I hope you will, we'll be there to support you with materials, speakers, tracking app, help you get the shirts, flags if you want them. We will help like crazy to make this as easy as we can for you, but we really need you to grab it and make it yours. Stacy, I think there's one more chart. Yes, it's the goodbye chart and it's not goodbye. I'm gonna be around. And down at the bottom is the URL you use to register yourself or a team and/or make a donation. It's really simple. See that picture of Terry smiling there? Let's make him smile some more. Thank you very much for your time and interest. I welcome any comments or suggestions, questions?
Would anyone have any questions of Don, members of council? There being none. Don, I thank you again for your presentation. Well done. And above all, thank you very much on behalf of our community and I'm sure the community is at large for all the hard work that you put into this effort and all the good that you do through the Terry Fox run. So again, thank you so much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, members of council, we will continue our meeting with the public meeting. And so I have to say that this is a public meeting under section 28 of the Planning Act to consider a community improvement plan. And to council, I say the purpose of this public meeting is not to engage in a debate regarding the merits of the plan, nor is it intended to be a question and answer session. It is to provide an opportunity for the public to make comments and for council members to ask clarifying questions. To the public, this is your opportunity to speak to the community improvement plan in accordance with the Planning Act. If a person does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make a written submission before the bylaw is passed or an approval given, you may not be entitled to appeal the decision to the local planning appeal tribunal. And you may not be added as a party to a hearing on an appeal to the LPAT unless, in the opinion of the LPAT, there are reasonable grounds to do so. And with that, maybe I will ask our planner to introduce the people from WSP. Andrea?
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council and the public. I am pleased to introduce Bobby Goché and also on the call tonight is Robert Repolt from WSP. They've been retained to help us and guide us through this process of developing a CAP. So I will turn it over to Bobby. He has a presentation and is well-versed in CIPs and can answer a lot of the questions council and the public may have.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public for joining us. So as Andrea mentioned, my name is Bobby Goché. I'm a senior project manager with WSP. And we're the firm that the town retained to complete the CIP process. So I'll be walking through just about a 10-minute presentation summarizing the process conducted to date. I'm gonna start out by attempting to share my screen so that we can walk you through a presentation. And if you can see that, okay, if I could get a thumbs up or something, perfect, good to go. So as I said, the presentation's about 10 minutes. I don't want to take too much time tonight. Focus more on the comments and the questions from council and the public. But I will start out with a bit of an introduction to what a community improvement plan is. So I can appreciate there might be some people on the call that have no idea what we're talking about today. So I do want to start out with some of the basics. We'll talk about the process and the timeline, so how we got to where we are in the process today. Talk about the study area. We'll list the proposed financial incentive programs, which, as you'll learn, are the focus and the heart of a CIP. And then I'll conclude with a few remarks just about how the CIP is to be administered. So on the next slide, what is a CIP? Fundamentally, a CIP is a revitalization tool. It's used by probably in the order of 100 municipalities, something like that, to promote things like downtown revitalization, heritage conservation, affordable housing, and so on. Ultimately, it's a tool that's used to stimulate investment in private property. The town's authority for producing CIPs falls under the Planning Act. So the Planning Act, if you're not familiar, is provincial law, it's legislation. And if you look at section 28 of the Planning Act, you'll find what the municipality can do with a CIP. And principally, the role of a CIP is to allow the town to issue financial incentives to private landowners and tenants. So they can issue grants, they can issue loans focused on the stimulation of investment in the property. So aesthetic improvements, development, and all kinds of other improvements to the property. So they are property-focused. Under the Planning Act, you can't give incentives for, you know, business operational things like paying, paying staff and that sort of thing. It's really focused more on granting either grants or loans for the purposes of physical improvements to the property. And I think that's an important point to make. So the purpose of the study, of course, is to develop a CIP for the Town of Penetangwishing. So we are looking, of course, at introducing financial incentives that will promote property improvements. The main point of this, of course, is to contribute to revitalization, to stimulate development, stimulate appropriate and desirable improvement to property throughout the downtown and the commercial areas. That's really the focus of this program. And of course, we're also focusing and supporting the implementation of the town's official plan. So the town has a pretty recent document that sets a course for the future, a vision for the future, and a strategy to manage growth and land use change. And I do think that the CIP is an important tool to help support that vision in the long term. So the next slide, study process and timeline. This has been a fairly quick process, about six months so far, which is pretty typical for a CIP of this nature. So we started out back in November and conducted the kickoff meeting and the walking tour of the community. I'll talk about that on the next slide. We undertook a critical needs assessment late last year, which is really our way of saying, you know, us as consultants, we're new to the town and we evaluated the town and evaluated whether a CIP is appropriate for the town. And how can a CIP support revitalization of a community? And then early this year, we drafted the community improvement plan. We got really lucky before COVID-19, you know, got crazy in mid-March or so. We had our public open house and our workshop right at the start of March. So we avoided everything, had a great turnout, and I'll talk about that a bit on the next slide. And then we're here today for the stat public meeting, which is really the formal opportunity for members of the public to provide their comments. The intent after tonight is to take the comments that we get today and to finalize the community improvement plan and bring it forward for council's consideration to adopt, probably in July, but maybe in August. I think it depends on the extent of the kinds of comments that we receive tonight. So that's a bit of a summary of the timeline and the process thus far. In terms of public input, like I said, we had our community walking tour and our kickoff meeting back in November. I've never done a project initiation meeting that involved an invitation to the public. And this one did and I really liked it. So we had about 25 people that came out. We just walked around the downtown, took photos and collected our thoughts from business owners, members of the community, residents. And people had a lot of great ideas that we, that we recorded through that discussion. So I thought it was really valuable and I do plan to do something like that again on a CIP in the future. I really liked it. We had our public open house and our workshop with the public on March 4th, as I mentioned. About 30 people came out, which I thought was great, a great attendance. We received 15 workbooks, so we gave a workbook to everybody to fill out as part of the workshop and we got 15 back. The open house included, you know, some display boards explaining the general purpose of the project. We had a presentation, a Q and A session, and we had an in-depth workshop discussion in which we asked participants to comment on things like, you know, the SWOT analysis, so the critical needs review of the downtown. Asked people to comment on the vision for the community. And we asked people also to rank different incentive programs, you know, what's the importance and the usefulness of each incentive program that we were proposing? So we had a lot of good valuable input that I think has, you know, more or less confirmed the direction that we wanted to go in for the study. So the next, the next slide, draft community improvement project area. So there is a need in this study to establish the boundaries within which the community improvement plan will apply. We call that the community improvement project area. So if you're outside of that boundary and you own property, you won't be able to apply for the incentive programs. It's important that we set out that sort of limitation to where the CIP is going to apply. We aligned the CIPA with the downtown waterfront area and the mixed-use commercial area designations of the official plan. So there's good alignment with other planning policy documents. And I think that represented a really good suitable basis for delineating the CIPA. We also have three precinct areas and I'll just move to the next slide to explain that. So the dark, the dark black, if you can see it, the dark black boundary represents the limits of the community improvement plan. So this is where the incentives would be made available. Like I said, it aligns with the waterfront, the downtown, as well as the commercial and mixed-use area. We've identified three precincts, the northern, the central, and the southern. And the incentives that are available in each area differ because there are different issues to be addressed in different areas. The central area, of course, is more of the focus of the town's historic heritage resources. So you'll find a very broad range of programs available here. And I'll go over those on the next slide. The northern precinct, you know, pretty similar to the central precinct, but slightly reduced range of incentives. And then the southern precinct, which is more of a highway commercial kind of an area, but of course is planned to evolve in the future and subject to only a limited range of incentive programs compared to the downtown core. So that's sort of the thinking there. So what is contained in the draft CIP? If you, if you were so keen to open it up and have a gander at the contents, you'll find a vision, goals, and objectives, because I think it's critical to state upfront, what is the CIP supposed to achieve? If you don't, if you're not saying what it's going to achieve, how do you know when it achieves it? Right? So I think it's really, it's really important to lay that out early on in the plan. The bulk of the plan are the financial incentive programs. That's the majority of the content. That's what the CIP is all about. So you'll find the financial incentive programs listed. You'll also find eligibility criteria and implementation policies for each incentive. So not just anyone can apply for the incentives, like just simply being in that area doesn't mean that you can, you can be eligible for an incentive. You also have to meet the other eligibility criteria of the plan, like ensuring that you're implementing a pretty high standard of design. Has to be, it has to be a good desirable project that advances the goals and objectives of the CIP. That's very important. There's a plan monitoring and evaluation program introduced into the plan. So there's a process for which the town will evaluate how the plan's performing. And over time, if the plan's not, you know, meeting the town's needs, if it's not working, then the town can revisit the plan and revise it. And that's pretty normal. CIPs are a little bit hard to predict. The first year, I call it more of a trial run. You don't exactly know what kinds of applications you're gonna get. And oftentimes, you'll have to do a little bit of a tweaking after that. And then there's some administrative policies and I'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. So the proposed incentive programs, I've listed them on the slide. You know, I didn't want to spend tons and tons of time on those presentation going over them. So I'll just describe them very briefly. We're, I think the overall approach here is that we want to have a toolbox of incentives. You know, some of these incentives may not be utilized in the next few years, but they may become more relevant in the future as, as the community kind of evolves and adapts and revitalizes over time. The first incentive program is the building facade grant and loan program. I think if you look at any CIP in Ontario, this is by far the most common incentive program that you'll find. It's an incentive, a grant. It's an incentive, a grant or a loan that relates to improving your your commercial facade, making it look better, restoring original building materials, improving little structural issues and that sort of thing. So it has a lot of applicability, and I would expect it would have relatively high uptake compared to the other programs. The signage improvement grant and loan program is the second program. You'll also get high uptake on this one, and it's just what it says. It's it's a grant or a loan to help businesses improve their signage. You know, have a really nice new modern sign that helps to contribute positively to the aesthetic of the downtown. The third program is the Building Improvement and Renovation Grant and Loan Program. This is, I think, quite an interesting program that resonated really well, I think, with some of the members of the public at the open house. And I think has even become more relevant with COVID nineteen. So this is a grant or a loan that's intended to help existing business owners improve their building to meet the Ontario Building Code. So there's any deficiencies from a building code perspective, this can help them meet that. But I think it's also an applicable program if, say, a store owner wants to convert their business, or if you're a new business owner and you want to open up shop, then this is a grant that can help you, a grant or a loan that can help you bring the building up to code. Okay, so it can be quite critical, I think, in terms of establishing a new a new business. The Affordable Housing Grant and Loan Program is about improving the quality, the mix of housing units in the downtown and also promoting an increase in the number of units in the downtown. So it's a grant or a loan related to adding new residential units in the upper stories of buildings in particular. The landscaping property improvement loan and grant and loan program is probably the most diverse program. There's a wide range of eligible projects under this. So improving your landscaping, but also adding like a commercial patio, an outdoor patio, a seating area, an association with a restaurant or a cafe. So there's a lot of applicability with that program right across the study area. And then the plan also introduces a couple of what I would describe as development incentives. They're incentives that are much more geared towards significant investment, not just not just aesthetic improvement, but really significant investment. The first one is called a Tax Increment Grant and Loan Program. Suffice it to say, you know, if, for example, you own a vacant property and you want to develop it, your taxes are going to go up. That's just, that's just the reality of how property taxes work. This is a grant or a loan that essentially refunds a portion or all of that tax increase over a set period of time. So it can kind of help the developer or the property owner get used to their new their new tax assessment. And those grants can be quite substantial, quite substantial, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars or loans. So they they are considered a program that helps to stimulate development and infill rather than just minor aesthetic improvements. And then there's a program for granting back or rebating building and and planning, planning application fees. So again, it's it's about kind of reducing the barriers to investment. And and as I said, sort of off the top, I think the approach here is really about having a wide range of different tools available to the town, you know, for implementation when the town sees fit and funding when the town sees fit in order to respond to different needs and evolving issues in the downtown area. So just a final slide, my my remarks about the administration of the CIP. And I can appreciate there's quite a bit of a learning curve when it comes to administering a CIP. But I'll I'll just touch on a few, I think, key points that I think are worth mentioning here. The first key point is that the CIP depends upon council's allocation of funding for the incentive programs. So on an annual basis, council has the option to to add funding to individual incentives or to the entirety of all incentives. So the CIP doesn't have any effect if there's no funding available for the incentives. And and there's quite a bit of discretion, and there's quite a bit of flexibility there. Council can actually allocate funding to individual programs. So if you want to focus on a certain grant in one year, you can certainly do that. Another important point about administration is that the town will have to select an administrator, and they'll facilitate implementation. They'll be the person that will correspond to potential applicants. They'll be the person also who will correspond with what we call a review panel. So it's gonna gonna have to be a set of people identified to make decisions on financial incentive applications. By default, that's council. But I often recommend delegating that to to a group of staff who have the expertise and can respond very efficiently. The administrators administrator and the review panel are also, I think, critical for ensuring that applications meet the eligibility criteria. You know, not just not just approving anything, but approving stuff that meets the goals and the vision of the plan. That's their responsibility, and the CIP gives them the the authority essentially to refuse an application that doesn't meet those objectives. Finally, I'll note, applications would intended to be accepted year-round. So the town can receive an application whenever someone makes an application. But the CIP also includes the option for the town to implement was called an intake window process. I've seen that used successfully in other municipalities. And that's essentially where applications are only accepted during a set period of time. Like, say, say, a two-week window a couple of times a year. That that can help kind of prompt urgency in applications. But it also means that the town has to kind of rank applications. If it receives more applications, then there is funding available. So there's kind of pros and cons to different processes. I suggest starting with a year-round process and kind of going from there. So some next steps to the whole purpose of tonight is to obtain formal public input. On that basis, we'll finalize the CIP and look for council adoption in July or August of this year. And and as sort of, as I noted, the, you know, the CIP doesn't take effect until council assigns budget to implement the incentive program. So the CIP will kind of sit on a shelf if it doesn't receive that that funding to support, support its implementation, excuse me. And so, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. I'll turn it back to you. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you, Bobby. Very well done, as a matter of fact. And we'll carry on now, pass it over to the clerk to stay with the setup the process now for the public.
Absolutely. Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to double check that there wasn't anything that the director of planning needed to say in in addition to what the what the consultants have said. No? Okay, wonderful. And so now I'll ask that if there's any members of the public that do want to make a comment. I know we had some members of the public, council may not realize this. We did have a few members of public added while the presentation was happening or during even Don's presentation, people were being added. So they may not have heard my my spiel at the beginning, which was that we were wanting to mute and turn off cameras from anybody that's participating. But if you did want to make a comment, now would be the time to turn on your camera and turn on your microphone and indicate to the mayor that there are comments that you'd like to make regarding the the proposed draft CIP for that we've just been presented. Recognizing somebody might be struggling with their cameras on and off. There's also a chat feature that you'll see at the bottom. And that if you sent me a chat, I could turn your camera on for you if you're struggling. But I guess we should just take a minute and allow any of our members of the public to either chat or add to, put their camera on or turn their microphone on, even if they can't get their camera on. That would be great. Not seeing anything so far. I don't want to rush it through, though, because I know technical difficulties can happen, and I'm the queen of technical difficulties, so I will, oh, we have somebody. There's Ross. Okay. Hi, Ross.
Sometimes you just need somebody to break the ice, right? I think it looks terrific. The only question I would have is, do you, does the, does the town and mayor and council know at this point what funding would be allocated to each one of those loans and grants? Or is that something that gets decided later on?
Maybe I could ask our planner if she can fill us in on that one. Or Bobby, one or the other.
Thank you, your worship. I will try and and provide some clarity to that one. And I may actually turn to Carrie, too. But I do believe when this budget was set, there was fifty thousand dollars set aside. And so this project is portions of it. I believe there's twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for for the Community Improvement Plan rollout. It's not, we haven't discussed if there's any sort of specific of the programs that we'd allocated to. That's sort of the next step when we implement the CIP. But I do know for twenty nineteen, or sorry, twenty twenty, there is money in the budget, just decisions for council on the allocation or when that allocation is granted.
Thanks, Andrew.
Am I being heard? Yeah, a few, a couple nods. I'm not in the video. Hi, it's Sam Taggart. I have eighty-eight Main Street in in Penetangiac Shoppers. Is everybody, that one?
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Perfect, thank you. Just a couple of brief questions. One was under the program where you, you know, you you look, landlord has to do certain work and a tenant has to do certain work. Would the program be eligible to both parties potentially for renovations or what has to be done? And my second question would be, can a property be eligible for more than one program? If it's, you know, you you list, you know, five or six items there. And I have a building that might be eligible for about eight of them. But having said that, just wondering how that might work. Has there been any thought given to the the amount of eligibility for a particular property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't mind addressing that question. So the first question was about whether the property owner or the tenant can kind of, I guess, supply at the same time or help tackle projects in conjunction with one another. I don't, I don't think the CIP is restrictive about whether that can occur. I think there should be flexibility. I think the the town's main concern would be to ensure that the property owner and the tenant aren't doubling up on on, you know, claiming claiming costs and expenses. And I think they just want to be sure that whatever applications they receive, that they're only, you know, issuing a grant or a loan once to those to those things. So I don't think that there's any constraint with respect to receiving multiple applications from the tenant to the property owner in any given case. You know, I think the town's quite flexible and would be open to considering that. The second question regarding whether the programs can be combined. It's a great question, and I probably should have spoken to that in the presentation. Generally speaking, absolutely yes. All of the, all of the grant and loan programs can be combined at the same time. That's going to be limited a little bit in terms of council's funding. So if council decides to fund only certain programs, then obviously you'd only be able to apply for programs that have active funding available. The the other exception I'll make is that the the Tax Increment Grant and Loan Program that I described, wherein a property owner, when they develop their property and receive some sort of refund for taxes, that cannot be combined with any other program. But that that's a program that stands on its own as a grant, as a pretty significant grant or a loan related to redevelopment and infill. The other programs, I think, are more about, you know, more modest revitalization. So they can't be combined with the Tax Increment Grant Program.
Well answered. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the public? Counselor Cummings, there will be a section for council following the public. And you have another question or no?
I think I'm 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 done. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Bobby, do you have any concluding comments at all?
Nothing comes to mind in particular, just to just to emphasize that we're still open to comments. So if people can provide some written comments and suggestions, we're happy to integrate them and to finalize the CIP within about the next month or so.
Okay. And with that, are there any questions from council on the information presented tonight? And I believe a while ago, but Counselor Cummings, I saw your yellow card up.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. I do have a question. Has there been any thought put into who would be the program administrator of this particular program?
Andrea?
Thank you very much, your worship, through to Counselor Cummings. We have had some internal conversations about that review panel and that administrator. Historically, the the old facade improvement program was administered through the Planning and Community Development Department. I think there was authority through the senior planner to do a lot of the administrative tasks and then the paperwork and sign agreements and that kind of administration of the CIP or the sorry, the former facade improvement program. I think in this case, we may want to expand it, especially given some of the some of the larger programs around the financial components and the loans. And I know we had conversations with our treasurer, Carrie, on on that. And so those are the conversations we've had. I think at this point, we were recommending that the administration be done by staff internally and with sort of quarterly updates to council as to how that program or what the current status looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of council who have questions or concerns? Counselor Slidamah?
Thank you very much, your worship. Great presentation, Bobby. Thank you. I I did pose this question during the open session, like the open that we did. And I just quickly mentioned it to our our planning director as well. The like part of the area on Water Street and on Nettleton, I believe, are a combination of commercial and residential zoning. And I was just curious as to like how the design was made from the the actual plan, because it does seem like a section's been cut out as opposed to being all squared off.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Has there been a change in the official plan in that particular section?
In the official plan, I don't, I don't believe so. So we've largely based the area to which the CIP applies on the current official plan. So we're trying to be consistent with the designation of the downtown, the waterfront, the commercial and mixed-use areas of the town. We tried to be consistent with that. We have excluded a few lands that are publicly owned because, of course, the CIP doesn't really have a lot of relevance to publicly owned property. So we've only included the private properties. But if if you feel like there are some relevant properties that we're missing and should be included, I think we're quite open to to taking another look at that and integrating those comments. I think in particular, if there is permission for commercial uses, you know, I think I'd be open to to adding that within the area.
Your worship, if I could?
Yes.
Just to supplement what Bobby mentioned about the delineation of the project area for the Community Improvement Plan. I think an important point to note is that the adoption of the CIP is done through a bylaw, and the CIP project area will form a schedule to that bylaw. So should we also need to, in the future, tweak the project area? It's an amendment to the bylaw as opposed to, you know, amendment to the actual Community Improvement Plan that follows this process. So there's an easy tool to amend that project area if we deem it necessary.
Anyone else who wish to address the issue? Okay, there being none then. Just for the coming, thank everyone for their attendance and virtual participation. Council naturally will consider the comments and the Community Improvement Plan and the results of the public meeting at the next meeting on July eighth. And with that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder on the Community Improvement Plan Public Meeting and Background Report, that this report be received for discussion and that staff be directed to prepare a report for the next committee of the whole meeting to address any comments received at the public meeting respecting the draft Community Improvement Plan dated January twenty twenty. Community Improvement Plan dated January 2020. Mover, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Clu, all in favor? Thank you. That is Carrie. And Bobby, once again, thank you for a very well done presentation. And again, Andrea, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
That will move us on to the adoptions of minutes not already confirmed. And I would need a mover and a seconder that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted as circulated. Council, May 13, 2020. Committee of the whole, May 13, 2020. And special council, May 13, 2020. Mover and the seconder. Counselor Rose, Counselor Cummings, all in favor? And that is Carrie. And that moves us on to consent agenda, which we have none. So then we move on to matters for consideration. And that brings us to the coalition, coalition of the inclusive municipalities. And Counselor Clu, since you worked with our clerk, Stacy Cooper from this, I might ask that you go ahead and read this proclamation.
Happy to do so. Thank you, your worship. Just a brief statement here before I read the resolution, the genesis. So we've seen a flood of energy and frustration in the last couple of weeks following the death of George Floyd. This incident in Minneapolis was a wake-up call that initiated big conversations about systemic racism. We are certainly not immune to the effects of racism in Canada. And as elected officials, we have a responsibility to listen and to learn and to be changemakers. As such, I'm pleased to present the following resolution to kickstart the work that we need to do as a municipality to address racism and discrimination and to make progress for a more inclusive Penetanguishing. This resolution would be a first step, one that sets the wheels in motion for a larger discussion about inclusiveness in our community. By joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, we would become part of a network of towns and cities that are taking action to improve their policies and undertake initiatives to help eliminate racism and discrimination. The resolution reads as such. Whereas the town of Penetanguishing is committed to recognizing the dignity of all its residents and that the diverse contributions of both immigrants and native born. And whereas the politics of division, isolation and hate have no place in our community. As residents of Penetanguishing, we recognize that all people are deserving of assurance of the basic principles of equity and human rights guaranteed to all persons by our Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the town of Penetanguishing stand with our community in supporting the principles of fairness, dignity and acceptance. That these core principles commit us to promoting a peaceful discourse with all members of our community. And that we reject the politics of division and isolation that fan anger and hate against any person or group. And that council move forward in joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, CIM, formerly known as the Canadian Coalition for Municipalities Against Racism and Discrimination, in 2020. Your worship, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Counselor Clu. And with that, I believe that it would be awarded a mover and a seconder on this. Could I have Counselor Cummings and Counselor Levy, all in favor? Thank you. Well, that will now move us on to verbal report. Chukie C. Mard, the verbal report from the Chief Administrative Officer for COVID-19 situational update. And that the COVID-19 situational update be received for information. So Mr. CAO, if you would please?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to provide on this verbal update, I just wanted to provide a brief update for council as well as members of the public with respect to some key impacts and changes since the last update on May the 13th. So I'm going to try and encapsulate any changes that have had a direct impact on municipal services. So on that note, we've saw a lot happen from May 14th to as recent as today with respect to provincial announcements, right from stage one of the province's reopening plans through to permitting marinas and private parks opening, construction projects returning to normal or resuming, as well as earlier this week announcing a regional approach to opening phase two, which does have some impacts on municipal services as well. So from a departmental perspective, staff across the organization are continuing with day-to-day operation remotely in some cases, as well as in the office on an as-needed basis, while continuing to work through our continuity plan for the month of June. So I'm going to focus predominantly the areas you'll, you'll see me focus on are Recreation and Community Services areas. Just given the provincial announcements and the permissions that the provinces come out with. And it's all relative to changes since May 13th. So as we kind of near the three-month mark of residents largely being segregated to their homes, there has been no greater time that we have seen the value of what Recreation and Community Services contributes to the life of residents in Penetanguishing. As Premier Ford slowly opens community spaces, amenities and whatnot, residents are really eager to access them as well as get out and enjoy them and certainly just as eager as we are to provide the service. So we continue to proceed with caution. However, we, we need to ensure that we have well-thought-out plans and processes for keeping the public as well as our staff safe. And the Municipal Emergency Control Group continues to balance that delivery of service with the health and safety of our staff and the community. With respect to the province's first phase opening back in the middle of May, from a town of Penetanguishing perspective, as folks likely are aware, we have saw our launch ramp open with revised protocols. Our tennis, pickleball, sports fields, basketball courts have all opened with restrictions on use and play. And the skate park as well as the dog park have reopened. The wharf is now open with access to the floating docks limited to slip renters. And staff are currently reviewing the public health documents and operational impacts that pertain to public washrooms and beaches and are hoping to have recommendations to the Municipal Emergency Control Group in the near future. Those guidance documents just came out late last week, Friday, I believe. With respect to the second phase opening, which was announced earlier this week and, and take effect midnight this coming Friday, staff are currently reviewing those, those announcements and turning, turning their minds to the opening of this flashpad as well as the museum. Again, it does take some time and consideration. Similar to the launch ramp situation, we do rely on a third party to service the flashpad before opening. That's our normal course of action. And so relying on that third party is something that's out of our control. But certainly can do what we can at a staff level to encourage a visit to Penetanguishing. In addition to that, we do have staffing considerations that are in process to accommodate these changes. So just in some other areas from a recreation perspective, the day camps were canceled and announced earlier this week. So we are exploring alternative programming options within the capacity that we have available from a staffing perspective. And we are also in the process of onboarding additional seasonal staff to help keep up with the parks maintenance, predominantly grass cutting and whatnot. From a, so that's from a Recreation and Community Services perspective. From a planning and development perspective, staff continue a process with planning and building permit applications. As folks are aware, that was permitted several weeks ago. There are several consultations with the public and businesses affected over the summer on a number of initiatives and those will, those will carry on as normal. From a local perspective, organizationally, last week, we announced the suspension of the reduced work weeks that essentially take effect the end of this week. And the Municipal Emergency Control Group has received a draft version of the recovery reopening framework. And the intention being that that will be finalized next week through the working group. So the Municipal Emergency Control Group does continue to meet. We are now making, we are now meeting on a weekly basis as opposed to twice weekly. And, and recognize and as has been identified, the working group for the return to normal framework has brought forward that draft report. And that will be reviewed further next week. At which point, we intend from a control group perspective to begin discussing the timing for a phased approach to start transitioning staff back into the office, as well as giving consideration to when reopening of facilities predominantly administrative in nature might reopen to the public. So, you know, we want to obviously continue to follow the guidance from the province as well as our local health unit. We also want to be as, as in line as possible with our municipal partners and our municipal colleagues in Simcoe County, recognizing that we need to do what's best for us in Penetanguishing. And when I say what's best for us, what I'm referring to is the staff, the organization and the community as a whole. So I think, Mr. Mayor, we do, I do just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their ongoing patience and support. As we navigate through these changes, we appreciate staff, members of council, as well as members of public alike, continuing to assist in being ambassadors for a safe and healthy transition throughout our recovery. And perhaps, as has been identified in several news outlets, the new normal. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I do want to just thank everyone for their continued patience and continued support. And without the phenomenal staff that we have at the town, we wouldn't be in the position we're in today. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, members of council, anyone have questions to the CAO? I don't see anyone, so we will carry on with our agenda. And we will move on to the impact to the 2020 capital budget related to the Essential Services Regulation.
Your worship, sorry. Counselor May, just requesting to speak. I just, you didn't notice. I had to point that out for you.
All right.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to declare a conflict with one of the capital project because it has to do with my street that I live on.
Very well. Clerk will take the note of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we go to whereas on April 22, 2020, council approved an amended 2020 capital budget related to the Essential Services Regulation restrictions. And whereas on May 29, 2020, the province removed a number of the restrictions with an updated version of the Essential Services Regulations. And whereas staff have reviewed the amended list, updated restrictions and remaining time within 2020 and determined that additional projects could be completed. Now therefore, council moves to suspend the rules as per section 10.1 of procedural bylaws 2019-25 and reconsider the decision of April 22, 2020. And finally, that staff be directed to proceed as outlined within the staff report. And if I could have a mover and a seconder on that? Move by Counselor Clu and seconded by Counselor LaRose. Then we will open it for discussion. And request to speak Deputy Mayor. You're on, you Deputy Mayor. Okay, go.
Thank you, your worship. I noticed in looking at the capital projects that there is a potential for a capital project of a sidewalk on John Street, right? My property. Do I have a conflict with anything on that? Perhaps I would ask our clerk.
That's kind of, that's kind of putting the clerk in an awkward position, Deputy Mayor. Normally, when a person feels they have a conflict, I remember my old buddy, Yvonne Gagne, he always told me that when you perceive it to be, you declare it. So.
Well, I do not perceive that I have a conflict. I will not.
Therefore, therefore, we will carry on.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who has any questions in regards to that? Counselor Vatibonkar?
Thank you, worship. I had a look at this over the weekend and there were a couple of projects that jumped out at me that are highlighted in red. And I asked a couple of questions when we met a section earlier this week and I thought it would be important to ask them tonight. They have to do with the projects proposed for the arena. And if you look at your chart, there are, and writing's tiny, but it's Brian Orser Hall upgrades and it's the dressing room and snack bar upgrades. So the dressing room and snack bar, it's about a little over 12,000. And the Brian Orser Hall upgrades is 10,000. So when I looked at that and I saw them on the, on the colored red and basically the reason for it is will not be completed due to staffing resources and not completed due to staffing resources. My thought was that when the facility is closed, this would be an ideal time to do this kind of work. It wouldn't be interfering with anything, you know, there's no ball hockey, the snack bar's not open, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So it seemed to be an ideal time to do this work. So I asked a question at, at the meeting and I'm asking again tonight so that I can have an understanding and the public can have an understanding why we're not proceeding with these two, two small projects in a facility that is currently closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vatibonkar. With that, I might refer that to either the CAO or our Director of Recreation, Community Services. So who will go on?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask our Director of Recreation, Sheri DeJarden, to, to speak to it. But she's forefront and knows the situation best.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Counselor Vatibonkar. These projects for the last three months of our administrative time has been devoted to new, implementing new processes, reviewing workspaces, additional facility cleaning, which is not, when normally we would have devoted that three months' worth of administrative work to moving forward with capital projects. So these new tasks have unfortunately taken on that time. The additional piece of that is, is that we've normally, you know, onboarded six or seven recreation labors by now to help with some of, some of those tasks. We had facility attendance at one time that we terminated early and whatnot. So our staffing complement has decreased significantly and the facility operators have taken on tasks that might have otherwise been done by contracted, contracted staff. So those are a couple of the reasons. Another is that essentially the arena has been converted into a socially distancing workspace to keep our teams safe and prevent them from interacting with one another. So bringing in contractors when we're trying to keep staff safe and limit the amount of contact that they have with people to prevent illness is of high priority and top of mind for us as well. So those, those are the biggest reasons.
Thank you, Sheri. Counselor Vatibonkar, do you have a further comment?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just supplementary, so that, you know, if circumstances change, I don't see the facility opening anytime soon. Will we have the opportunity to do these projects while the facility is closed? It just seems to make sense to me to do them while the facility is closed as opposed to reopening the facility or sorry, when the facility is open.
I would say, Counselor Vatibonkar, that the Emergency Committee is reviewing all of these things on a, on a weekly and actually daily basis. And certainly somewhere along the line, if the opportunity were to arise and it were possible, possible, then yes, we would probably look at and be considering.
Thank you, worship.
Further questions on this? Okay, we had a mover and a seconder, so all in favor? Thank you. And it's passed. Thank you. And so we move on to the project lifesaver funding request and that as further recommendation from the Police Services Board, council approves the funding in the amount of 1,250 towards the purchase of two receivers to cover Midland, Penetanguishing, Tiny and K. Mover and a seconder. Councillor Cummings and councillor Mayat, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And that brings us on to the arena feasibility study R F P award, R C S twenty twenty eleven. Uh mover and a seconder on that R F P twenty twenty oh two recreation center needs assessment, location and feasibility study. He awarded to Monte Brown Planning Consultant in the amount of eighty four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. A mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Sainte Ma and seconded by no uh councillor LaRose. Discussion concerns? Anyone wishing to speak on it? No, then all in favor? Thank you. That is also carried. And then that moves us on to the economic development COVID nineteen. Uh that a business recovery task force ad hoc committee of council be struck and that staff be directed to solicit volunteers from the community to participate on the business recovery task force ad hoc committee. Mover? Uh Deputy Mayor, seconder. Councillor Levy, uh any questions or requests to speak? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I just wondered if our director planning could give us a brief rundown. This was an excellent report, uh very thorough. And I wonder if she could just give us a very brief outline of this particular report.
Andrea, if you would, please.
Thanks, your worship, and thanks to you, Deputy Mayor. So um you have the report in front of you. It wasn't intended to be an all encompassing report of all the potential opportunities municipality could consider, all the changes that we could consider. Really, I think, as we said, we're at the very beginning of understanding how our businesses are going to be impacted um over the short and long term. So where we can facilitate any assistance from the municipality, um let's consider it. I think another big part of the report speaks to um listening to our businesses and talking to our business community to know what their needs are. Um, we have some results from the county surveys as a whole, but not specifically what our business needs are. So there are some things there that I think we need to hear back from our community that'll help um guide whatever changes council may want to consider, if any. It all around business recovery. The task force, um I concept really is um putting together a group of people who participate in this, in this group. And we're soliciting as much interest from the municipality residents as possible. We could get some professionals um also participating in that. So this will all be subject to a follow up or we're going to, we're asking to solicit our volunteers and then follow up with council on who's, who's volunteered their time, what that ad hoc committee looks like, as well as the terms of reference.
supplementary, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Well, just thank you, Andrea, for putting that together. Uh, so how do you go about, uh, will you be informing the business sector by email or dropping off letters to them about this particular initiative or just how is that going to unfold?
Yeah, through uh through you, your worship, to Deputy Mayor, we can use all of our sort of social media tools as well, traditional newspaper, word of mouth. I mean, I encourage you guys, a lot of you guys are, are know the members of our community too. So um if you have somebody that may have an interest or or um want to participate in this, I, I'm sure there'll be lots of ways that we'll share and ask for people to step up to this volunteer opportunity.
Good. Thank you, Andrea.
Councillor Levy, I believe I saw you had the request to speak.
Thank you very much, uh Mayor LaRose. Uh, I would very much like to volunteer to chair this committee simply because I'm on the front line with E D C N S. And um I've been seeing a lot of duplication between the province, the feds, the county and E D C N S. And that troubles me that I'm seeing the duplication. Um, I, I do have some very solid ideas on what we as a municipality can do. And I'd like to point out to uh my council colleagues that we have uh just, well, we haven't just finished, but we did roll out the reopening kit through E D, E D C N S, which is of course funded by the four municipalities. And uh any, any monies we actually can use to help the businesses would have to go through an organization like E D C N S. We're not permitted to hand out dollars. Uh, it's a complex situation. Um, I'd just like to add that uh what I've seen, there's two levels of government. I believe it's county and provincially that are offering to pay local, small businesses to um have coaches, mentors, et cetera, uh help us pivot. Great, great COVID word. Help us pivot to online and sales, et cetera, to help protect businesses in the future. That's the one I like. I like the fact that we have supported the reopening kit. It is still ongoing. I got a message today. Uh, not sure the glass is available, but the other products in the reopening kit are still available. So. And plus, my other comment to this was, we would have to be nimble. We would have to go very quickly. This isn't something you take a month to strike a committee and take, you know, two months to report back. This is an immediate need. So I would love to be uh work with Sharon Bay from Economic Development with um our, our planning section and with Andrea, but we have to absolutely be nimble. And as we were with our uh E D C N S um task force on uh municipal uh retain, business retention. So my only comment is whatever you, you folks want to do, it has to be something immediate and responsive and not take months because there aren't months. Uh, we, we have to step up in whatever way we can, whether it's information sharing, supporting other programs, it, it has to happen immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Levy, and uh thank you for the offer. And I'm sure when the time comes for the striking of this committee, our director, uh Andrea Betty, who will be certainly involved with this election, will certainly remember that you offered this. So uh thank you again, and I think that you would be an asset on this committee. Uh, anybody else have wanting to speak on this issue? Okay, there being none, all in favor? Oh, your councillor Vatibonkar, you want to, you want to speak on it?
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of comments. Uh, I agree with councillor Levy with respect to, we have to be quick on this. I think it's, it's going to be important to, to move quickly. Um, the other comment I had was with respect to the composition of the committee. Um, I understand it's, uh, you know, a council task force, so I'd like to see good representation from, uh, from council on, on the task force. Um, there are examples of task forces that uh are dominated by the business community and nothing against the business community. But I think at times, sometimes the expectations of the business community um are not in line with what the municipality is able to deliver. So I think that, you know, a healthy dose of reality around the table with respect to what the municipality is able to provide, I think is very helpful. So just be mindful of that. And uh the other thing, and I think the councillor Levy hinted at this as well in her comments, is that it's important for the town to really understand what opportunities and what limitations exist in terms of what the town can do. We have to stay in our lane with respect to this. There are other organizations, there's other levels of government. I think we have to zone in on what the town can do and then look at dealing with those matters um very quickly. So I just wanted to, to add those comments. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, councillor Vatibonkar, and I'm sure our planner again will take all of this into consideration and we can move with that. Councillor Levy, did you have a follow over?
Oops.
Go ahead. Councillor Levy, did you have another comment, more question that you wanted to ask?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, again now.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank councillor Vatibonkor for his comments. Um, I too think it should be a council-led initiative uh for all the reasons he stated, but also the additional comment I would make is that uh our, our business owners are up to their ears trying to make this all work and figure things out. And uh people like councillor Vatibonkor, myself, our planner, um, we actually have the information at our fingertips of what programs are there, what's available. Uh, and it's a matter of just getting together very quickly. And I'd love to see anyone else, all the little pictures I'm looking at, step up to the plate and offer to start this immediately. Thank you.
Once again, thank you. And, and, and the uh report does state that the recovery task force ad hoc committee be composed of councils. So the committee that I'm sure will be struck by members of council. Uh, further questions, concerns, all in favor? Thank you. And that moves us on to presentation and consideration of reports of the whole and have uh that the recommendations contained within committee, committee, committee of the whole report related to the recreation community service section be approved. Moved by councillor Rose, seconded by councillor Sainte Ma. Questions or concern on this? All in favor? Thank you. And it's carried. And then we move on that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to planning and development services section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor and councillor Clu, questions or concerns? Favor. Thank you. That is carried. Recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related transportation environmental services section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Councillor Mayat, councillor Levy, questions or concerns? All in favor? Thank you. And finally, that the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related to the finance and corporate services section be approved. Moved by councillor Vatibonkar, seconded by councillor Cummings. Questions or concerns? There being none, all in favor? Thank you. That is carried. And that moves us on to motions of which notice have been previously given, of which there are none. And notices of motions, there are none. So we move on to consideration of bylaws and bylaws. Uh, twenty twenty dash twenty five being a bylaw to adopt the budget estimates of all sums required for the year twenty twenty. Twenty twenty dash twenty six being a bylaw to set the rates of taxation for the year twenty twenty. Twenty twenty dash twenty seven, a bylaw to amend by law twenty nineteen dash eighty being a bylaw to provide for a twenty twenty interim tax levy for the payment of taxes and to provide for penalty and interest of fifteen percent per annum. And twenty twenty dash twenty eight being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between the corporation of the town of Penetanglishing and Christine Patnold for the operation of concession booth, the Snack Shack, at the Penetanglishing Memorial Community Center for the period of September first, twenty twenty to August thirty first, twenty twenty two, that the council of the town of Penetanglishing introduced the following bylaws. And that bylaws be read the first time and deemed to be read the second and third time and carried. Moved by councillor Vatibonkar and seconded by councillor LaRose, all in favor? Thank you. And that, my friends, moves us on to question period from the media and the public. Well, we know that there's no public left there and that. Kevin, do you have any questions? Being none from the media as well, we go to announcements and inquiries. Uh, I will start with a couple of announcements. Uh, number one, I think that basically uh we were all told a little earlier that it's uh our C A O's birthday today. So we all would like to wish our C A O a very happy birthday. Happy birthday, Jan.
Happy birthday!
Thank you, your worship and members of council. I appreciate that.
And, and again, on, on the birthday note is that I, I actually had the pleasure on, on Sunday evening to take part in a birthday drive by for our resident Bob Dalton. I'm sure many of you know Bob Dalton, and if you don't, Bob was on our seniors committee for many, many, many years. And he worked at the seniors barbecue and the seniors information day tirelessly for many years. And it was Bob's eightieth birthday on Sunday and they had a drive by and I know it's just unbelievable. They know that wished Bob a very happy eightieth birthday. And so with that, are there any other announcements? The councillor Cummings. You're muted, councillor Cummings.
Yeah, I've got too many moses in front of me, or mises, I guess it is.
You're good now.
Good. Thank you, worship. Um, I was just wondering, most members of council who are older members of council will remember that at one time uh we used to have an activity report that was given to us by our bylaw officer. That report included the written complaints, the call in complaints, uh the compliance and the clearance rates. Uh, any of the fines that were issued for the month and the number of kilometers that were done in observation in the town. I was wondering um if there's any way we could get that activity report back again.
Okay, thank you, councillor Cummings, and I'm sure that that is uh being understood and heard by senior staff, the C A O. And I think that maybe they could bring it back at one of their seniors' meetings.
Do we need to make a motion on that, your worship?
Uh, might have a question. Is there a motion required for this?
Your worship, what I, sorry, what I was going to suggest, your worship, is maybe um under referral items with P and D, if we can add a referral item and just be clear on what it is council's looking for, um then that would, I, that would be my suggestion, just in terms of uh dealing with it under the committee, the whole agenda at, at that, at that point. I don't know, Stacy, I apologize. I'm not sure what you were gonna.
That's exactly what I was to commit suggested during announcement and inquiries. There's no, no uh opportunity for motions to be passed. It's just an opportunity for, for that. But definitely I would agree with the C A O. It would be most appropriate to add it as a referral item under P and D when we get to committee of the whole.
So therefore councillor Cummings, when we get the committee of the whole, when we get to that part of P and D, uh to add it to, uh that you could make that.
Okay, second, second question, your worship, is um, there's a sign down at the wharf uh that is not a town sanctioned sign. It has to do with the wake in the Penetang Bay. Just wondering uh where we stand on that, since we don't have legislation for the federal or county or provincial waters as to a speed limit in our bay. Just wondering why the sign is up there?
Is there a C A O or?
Thank you, worship. Um, I think I know the sign you're referring to. Uh, it's, it's, I think it's respectfully requesting that boaters just be cautious of their wake. And I guess just from an operations perspective, similar to what we would do in any of our facilities or infrastructure. Um, you know, asking the public to be respectful, uh, you know, be it in our facilities or on our roadways, et cetera. Um, I believe I recall a conversation about a year ago or so uh that in, that involved our recreation staff. Um, and I believe uh the outcome from that was that we were just uh going to remind and respectfully request that folks uh do be cognizant of our infrastructure down there at the, at the wharf. Uh, and from an operations perspective, this is something we would uh typically do in any of our departments. typically do in any of our departments that would ultimately manage the affairs of municipal assets. I'm not sure if our Director of Recreation has anything to add to what I've alluded to. Your worship, perhaps she does or doesn't?
Sherry, do you have anything to add to?
Sure. Yeah, there was a gentleman that came and deputated to council before, and I think it was also in relation to waterfront property owners and just helping to spread the message to be mindful of the damage that, that wake, wakes caused to all the waterfront property owners as well.
Gee, and perhaps, Councilor Cummings, I could add that the three little fellows there on Friday night would have appreciated that that wake wasn't there when their when their unmanned boat drove into our gazebo at the Sullivan Park, yeah?
That, that was their own wake, though, your worship.
That tells them that they shouldn't be making them.
I'm just, I'm just worried that we had this problem several years ago, and we had a war between the shoreline owners and the boaters. And since we don't, we are not legislating the bay, we may be able to legislate around our harbor area because the Federal Waters Act says that your wake must be, or your speed limit must be eight kilometers within 100 feet or 30 meters of shoreline. But our bay at the, at the weakest point, or the thinnest point, is 1,500 feet across. So a lot of boaters are saying, where does this rule come from? So unless we have a sign, our logo on the sign, I have a hard time having that sign down at the wharf.
Well, I, I don't know what I can say about it, other than the fact that it's to me, not a detrimental thing. It's a very small sign on a door. It's really asking something that's very, to me, simple, but then again, where it goes.
And again, I could understand if it was to say a one foot, or pardon me, I think it's a one-foot wake at our, in our harbor area, but it's asking for the bay. So I guess it's wording as well.
Wow. So in other words, if they would just change the wording from the, from the harbor to the bay, or from the bay to the harbor-
To our harbor area, yes.
Would, would not be an issue. So, Sherry, maybe you could take that up with the people. Councilor, well, one at a time, Councilor LaRose. Councilor Rose, you're still on mute? Are you there, Dan? Okay, Councilor Rose, I'll come back to you. Deputy Mayor, you had your request to speak?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to give council a heads-up. We have one of our restaurateurs on the main street is putting outside patio on his property, and it's quite legal that he attempt to do that. I have shared this information with Andrea, and under the new rules that came out last week on the, or on Tuesday from the provincial government, he is allowed to do this on a very temporary basis. So just wanted to let council know that that's happening. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Rose, are you back now, or?
I believe so, I am, your worship. I just want, thank you. I just wanted to comment on Councilor Cummings and the sign down at the waterfront. I kind of like the sign the way it is and what it says. I believe it's just a gentle reminder to our boating community to, to take care, watch their wake, and be aware of what's going on. So I don't see anything wrong with it the way it is or the wording of it.
Thank you. And I see Mr. CAO, did you want to make a comment, or saw you?
Your worship, I was just gonna comment that staff will take away the feedback that we've received from both Councilor Rose as well as Councilor Cummings, and have some discussions just with respect to the wording and and any negative implications that it may have to the community or, or not, maybe the opposite effects to Councilor Rose's point, and have that discussion offline, if I might suggest that.
That's good. No problems with issues with that. Does anyone else have any inquiries or announcements to make? Councilwoman Cummings?
Thank you, worship. Just, just to add to what the CAO was saying, if our logo is on there and the wording is changed and we, as a council, support it, I can understand getting behind it.
Okay, thank you. And we'll leave it with staff. Further questions or announcements or inquiries? Hey, there being none, we will go to our confirmation bylaw and the 2020-29 confirmation bylaw 2020-29, signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover and a seconder. Councilor Cummings and Councilor Levy, all in favor? That is carried and a motion to adjourn. Councilor LaRose, we are adjourned. And council, if you just give me a few moments, I'll get back into my personal computer and get my committee of the whole agenda.
We're on a bit of a break?
Uh huh, for just one moment.
See, the clerk, we're still recording?
Is she?
I believe we're still live on Rogers as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I should be with you very shortly. And there we go.
No problem at all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're back. Committee of the whole, and I will call to order. And approval of the agenda, that the committee of the whole agenda, June 10, 2020, recommended action that the committee of the whole agenda for 20 June 10, 2020 be approved as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Councilor Clu and Councilor Cummings, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. Anyone who may have a declaration of pecuniary interest may do so now or at the proper time. We go to four, which is presentations and delegations. We have none. And we go to council information package. Council information package, June 10, 2020. That the council information package dated June 10, 2020, had been given due consideration, be received for information. Mover? Councilor Vatavonkar, Councilor Mayat, and Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Thank you. And now, I see that all in favor, I should have asked before if anyone had any concerns or issues with any items on the slip. Councilor Vatavonkar.
Thank you, worship. You're moving along there. I, I have a question about the, more general, but it's, it, what triggered me was the letter from our Director of Recreation to our, our boaters at the town dock giving a prorated slip rate for the 2020 season. I don't, I don't object to that. I think it just makes sense. I don't recall hearing about that in our conversations. As I said, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just wondering if there are any other businesses or tenants or anything else that we've prorated rents that we charge as a result of COVID. It does, it does have a financial impact. I was just curious if there were any others. Thank you, worship.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. CAO, are you able to respond to that?
Yeah, through your worship, there are not any other similar circumstances of this nature. If there, if there have been, they've come to council, given the ability from a timing perspective. I think there's been a couple other instances. One I can think of offhand was the snack bar at the arena. But I think the short answer to the question is there are not any others that haven't, haven't come to council in, in a similar nature.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I see all the correspondence from you and a mayor in Mexico in reference to Joyce Cote. And I wondered if you, I think it's very valid what she has done, and I thank you very much for writing the letters that you did. I wonder if you could just give us a little rundown? I don't think we've made that public, have we?
Well, yeah, okay, Deputy Mayor, this was a request that came to me by Rod the lawyer, who is actually a very good friend of the Cotes', and they went together quite a number of different people from Midland and Penetangusheen in the Mexico area where Joyce herself was very involved with fundraising for, for children and schools, particularly in that area. And she had raised a fair amount of money to the point that they were able to put in addition onto one of their schools, and she was being recognized posthumously by the mayor of that town. And so I was asked by Rod Ferguson if I, as the mayor of Penetangusheen, could send a letter to them recognizing Joyce and for all that she does. And that's what it was.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything more on the slip? There being none, then I did have a mover and a seconder, all in favor? Carried. And that moves us on to section A, Transportation, Environment Services. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilor.
Thank you, your worship. Consent agenda recommended for action that the following consented agenda item been given due to consideration for receiving for information. And it has to do with the Midland-Penetangusheen Transit Ridership Monthly Update for February and March 2020, RDS 2020-13 and RDS 2020-14. Anybody have any questions or remarks, or? Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Rose, seconder. Councilor Sainte Ma, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Consideration for matter, the Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan, RDS 2020-12, recommend for action that the 2020 to 2025 Energy Conservation and Development and Demand Management Plan be adopted. If I were to review this, if we have any question, or Director Peeny is here? Can I have a mover then? Mover Dan Rose, seconder, Councilor Cummings. Any discussion on it, or? All in favor for this motion? Pass, thank you. The item two is the Harbor Point subdivision phase two, initial acceptance for the sidewalk and second stage of the curb, ENG 2020-07. Recommend for action that the initial acceptance of the following work with phase two, the Harbor Point subdivision be approved, which is the sidewalks, the roads, the second stage is the the curbs on the Bilil Road in Hutton, Cresson, and Thompson Road. Do we have any, do I have a mover on this, sorry? Don't have a mover on this? Okay, mover by Deputy Mayor and the seconder by Councilor Levy. Do we have any discussion on this? Councilor Rose?
Thank you, Minister Chair. Just a question through to Brian Murray. Are we all set with the, the roads and curbs up there in in light of what happened with the last few rainstorms? I just wonder how that has affected our underground services? Have they been cleaned? Is, just want to make sure that everything is good to go there.
Thank you. Through Mr. Chair to Councilor LaRose. With the, the rains that happened a couple weeks ago, we have followed up with the developer regarding that, and they have provided some maintenance upgrades to the erosion and sedimentation controls that they have in phase three. With the, the rains that we got earlier this morning, provided a test of that. Was on the site, meeting with the developer and his engineer today, and the measures did perform very well after that short but pretty intense rainfall. So I'm very confident that moving forward, that it'll be able to withstand any rainfall that we receive.
So okay, with that, Councilor Rose, any more? Okay, any more questions? I think there was somebody that had Councilor Vatavonkar, I think?
Thank you. I did have a question, but Councilor Rose asked it for me, and, and we got the response, so thank you.
Okay, any more concerns or question directed to our Director Tene? Done? Are we all in favor for this motion? Pass, thank you. Referral for upcoming agenda and staff, referral that the Transportation and Environmental Service Section endorse the following additional existing referral, the upcoming agenda and staff. We have two of them on there, Church Street and Peel Street. Do we want to add anything or delete anything? Can I have a mover for this? Councilor Rose, Councilor Levy, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Back to you, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Mayat. And with that, we'll move on to section B, Recreation Community Services, and pass it on to Councilor LaRose.
Thank you, worship. Ours will be quick, fast, and efficient tonight. We have nothing on for our consent agenda. We do not have anything on for our matters for consideration. So we're moving right down into our referrals at the Recreation and Community Service Section. Endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. We have two of them. We have the outsourcing for day camp and the PMCC RFP. Is any body want to take any of those away or add any others on?
Councilor LaRose? I'm just wondering if the Penetangusheen Memorial Community Center can be removed now that the that has been approved?
Well, now that it's approved, usually our two-week process, we do it on the committee of the whole and then back at council. But seeing that we did it at council tonight, it probably could be removed. I think if, if everybody is in favor of that, we would be able to take that away. So we'll take that one away, and if we're adding nothing, we'll need a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Councilor Sainte Ma, seconded by Councilor Mayat. seconder for that, please. Moved by Counselor Sanamah, seconded by Counselor Mayat. All in favor? And that is carried. Your worship, it's back to you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Rose. That brings us to Section C, Planning and Community Development Services, and I pass it on to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Under our consent agenda, recommended action that the following consent agenda items, having been given due consideration, be received. For information, number one memorandum to council dated June 1, 2020, complete applications for Phase Four Harbor Point subdivision, plan of subdivision, file number P M, P M dash S U V dash 2020 dash one, and zoning bylaw amendment, file number Z A one dash two zero two zero. Could I have a mover? A mover for this? Thank you, Counselor Cummings, seconded by Counselor Mayat. Discussion. Andrea, did you want to give a brief?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just I'll note that the notice has gone out to the public, the, the public meetings set for our next council meeting on July 8. And that in the notice, you can go back, or the public can have access to all of the supporting documents that were submitted with the application, if anybody wants to take those, those reports and studies offline to read them.
Thank you, Andrea. Are there questions for members of council? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Um, we have item number B, a review and update of the town's property standards bylaw, recommended action that this report be received for discussion, and that's the draft property standards bylaw be endorsed for public review and comment. A mover? Counselor Clu, seconded by Counselor Levy, discussion? Yes, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was looking at the property standards proposal or the draft. And I don't think there's a, I don't feel that there's a need to go out for public review and content, pardon me, and comment. I think the timing of this bylaw should go ahead. Otherwise, we're waiting till the end of September to come to, back to council for a bylaw. I would sooner that we spend the money on an education piece to educate the, our taxpayers about our property standards bylaw. There's a little work needs to be done regarding timeliness and possibility, pardon me, possibility of town support for the graffiti part of it. But I really can't see a reason for sending it out, sending a survey out to our taxpayers for this particular bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings, for your comments. Andrea, did you want to respond to that? I know that it has been passed by our lawyers and different people have had a look at it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So as part of any bylaw, we felt that it was important to go out to the public. There are some implications with property owners that they may want to provide some input and feedback to council. As we tried to report to council that some of these changes were in the old bylaw taken out, and then now we're proposing to put back in. So we want to make sure that, again, people are aware of these changes and what impacts or comments they may have on some of these changes that may not just be directly around graffiti. There's some other things in there around health and safety. So I still would recommend that we go ahead with the consultation. I mean, it's, it's a fairly easy survey that we could put out there and get some input and bring back the bylaw with, with this input as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Andrea. I do believe Counselor Vada Babkur, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My comment was going to be similar to Counselor Cummings. I thought that having discussing it, or having us discuss it tonight at Committee of the Whole, there would be an alternative. If we wanted to, we could table it, or we could just let it go to council for the next meeting, and maybe insert an ad or put a notice on our website to say that we have now a draft new property standards bylaw. And if anybody has any issues, they can, they can get ahold of the clerk and, and advise of those issues. I, I just don't see the benefit of going out with this type of bylaw. I understand the, the interest and maybe on other types of bylaws, it might be appropriate. But I'm just struggling with this one. I think that there are other ways to make sure that the public are aware, they have an opportunity to provide input. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Levy?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I completely agree with Counselor Cummings and Counselor Vada Babkur. I think there are some times where we can just make the decisions, and this might be one of them. I don't think we need to carry this on for weeks, months, whatever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think there's three members of council, and I would, I think, agree. So are there other members of council that feel we should perhaps deal with this in bylaw form at our meeting later on this month?
Deputy Mayor, that would be determined by the vote?
Oh, yes, that's true. Okay. Um, so I will read again. I do have a mover and a seconder, that this report be received for discussion and the draft property standards bylaw be endorsed for the public review and comment. All those in favor?
Sorry, might, sorry to interrupt. Might I suggest, if we're looking, if we're, if we're getting a sense that, that people don't want the public comment piece, that there be a friendly amendment to that motion, removing that section versus defeating this motion and us starting from scratch? That's going to be my suggestion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have all kinds of people that would like to speak to this. Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just wonder if we have to go through the, the process of having the public comment. Could we make the public comment time be before our next council meeting so that this bylaw would be in effect as of two weeks from now?
Thank you. Stacy, can you answer that?
Yes, I mean, in a normal circumstance, you have the draft bylaw in front of you. This is the opportunity for discussion and direction to us as staff to make any amendments to that draft bylaw. And then the final bylaw could be brought forward at the, at the next council meeting in July for approval. It's just, it's just, you know, we just need to remove that public portion of it, if that's what, if that's what committee decides today. And I think the motion pretty much says that that's what we'll do if, if we do remove that, that one section. But I'll let the Director of Planning, it's, it's her report, so I don't want to feel her thunder. There may be something she wants to.
Okay, I did have others that wanted to speak to this. Counselor Levy? No, you're all set. Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think I, I would like to put that motion forward that we drop the public comment and survey, and as a friendly amendment, so that we can move on with this bylaw.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I do believe, your worship, you wanted to speak.
Well, I thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And that's exactly what I was going to propose, a friendly amendment to it, and remove the portion that does public review, and move on with the bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you read what a friendly amendment would look like, please?
I would really love to read the friendly amendment motion, but based on the computer system, the way I have it set up with Zoom, it's, I don't have it right in front of me. So I'm going to hope that the Director of Planning does, and she can, she can help me out.
Okay, Director Planning, Andrea?
Thanks very much. So the motion that I think that's on the floor right now simply says that, that this report will be received for discussion, and that the draft property standards bylaw be endorsed for public review and comment. What I would suggest for the
Have a mover and a seconder. Is that satisfactory? Yes? Okay, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Counselor Vada Babkur, you wanted to speak?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor, or Deputy Mayor. Just with respect to, just with respect to the motion, just a technical piece, I think it might state for consideration before the council for consideration as for instead of approval. With respect to, and putting a little note on the website to say that, you know, council is considering a new property standards bylaw, anybody has any comments, you know, please get them into the clerk or the director of planning, so they can be considered prior to the next meeting. I think there is some validity in terms of letting the public be aware, but I don't agree with the public consultation. So if we can just do a little quick note on our website, saying there's new property standards bylaw, that I think would achieve, excuse me, what, what I would like to see.
Thank you, Counselor Vada Babkur. Mr. CAO, did you have any comment to make?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My comment would be that that's definitely doable. I had made a note, and I'm sure our Director of Planning had made a note when that suggestion was raised earlier. So definitely, from my perspective, that's the intent, and we can certainly action that.
Very good. Is there further discussion? Seeing none? We have, the motion has been read, and I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. I will move on to referrals and upcoming agenda, that the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agenda. Or should we leave that until we actually pass the bylaw? Madam Clerk?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I think the clerk is having some technical glitches. She had just sent me a message. So my suggestion would be that we leave
I think
My suggestion would be that we leave that item until council ratifies it in two weeks.
Okay.
Or sorry, not two weeks, in July, pardon me. But certainly, I think that first item, the vacant municipal property inventory update could come off based on a report that came
Very good. Do I have a mover? By Counselor
I have a whole bunch of requests to speak.
Did you wish to speak, Counselor Clu? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking to add an item to the referrals list. That item would be a review of our sign bylaw, and how we can address the display of any hate speech or hate symbols in our town.
Okay, thank you. I would be very glad to add that. Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would not be in favor of removing the vacant municipal list. We dealt with it. We had a number of questions with it last time. We haven't dealt with any of those questions yet, so I would still rather see it stay there, please.
Thank you. Counselor Levy, did you have a question? Yes?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I would like to see the properties stay on the, as we learned before, once it goes away, it goes away for years. So we should leave it there until the questions are answered. And we have some solutions and resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm sure the clerk
Yes, I believe it was suggested that we add that at this time. So, Madam Director
Last meeting, there was the question or the request that bylaw information around the, the items you mentioned, number of calls for service, number of charges, number of court appearances, that kind of type of data be included. So I, I'm hopeful we can satisfy it through the next quarterly update, as opposed to putting it on, on the referrals. I'm happy to, obviously, but it was something that we had discussed previously and asked that that be included in the
Thank you, Counselor Cummings. Is that satisfactory?
We're just looking at that quarterly. Is that what we're talking about, rather than a monthly activity date?
Yes, quarterly.
I would prefer it monthly, if possible.
Well, I'm, I, that's a lot of work to put. Counselor Levy?
I agree with Counselor Cummings. We did it for years. I think you remember it. I know the mayor remembers it, Counselor Rose remembers it, Counselor Vada Babkur, Counselor Cummings. We remember it, and it was done under a one-person bylaw department. So I just don't understand why that information can't be collated very quickly and presented monthly.
Thank you. Andrea, do you have anything to add to that? Then we will put it on our referrals and upcoming staff to make sure that we that satisfactory? I don't see anyone objecting. So I do have a mover and a seconder, I think, with those two items added. So I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I am finished my section. I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And with that, we'll move on to nine, Section D, Finance and Corporate Services, and I will pass it on to Counselor Babkur.
Thank you, worship, members of council. So just referring to your Finance and Corporate Services agenda, we have nothing under the consent agenda. We have one might matter for consideration, and it's the COVID-19 Overview of Financial Impacts, update number three. And our treasurer has done a very detailed report. We reviewed it at section earlier this week, and asked a few questions, and the treasurer was able to respond. So with that, I'm just going to ask our treasurer to give a, a quick overview of where we're at with respect to the financial impacts of, of COVID, and answer any questions that members of council may have. So over to our treasurer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to summarize the report being presented tonight, so, and just by way of background, the province declared a state of emergency on March 17, and council quickly responded in terms of immediate short-term financial relief on March 31, in terms of waiving penalties and interest on the second installment of our property tax bills. Also, by way of background included in the report, are the previous two COVID financial impacts preliminary reports that were presented to council, sorry, to Committee of the Whole on April 22 and on May 13. So again, this is an update to the May 13 COVID Financial Impact Report. And the actual scenarios of potential revenue losses and cost containment efforts that was presented as attachment one on previous reports has been updated and is attached to your report. Year-to-date, actual revenue losses from things like Year-to-date, actual revenue losses from things like penalty and interest waiving, rental income, permits and licenses such as fire permits and dog tag permits and lottery licensing, user fees such as transit, ICE and floor rentals at the arena and other programming. So to date, $58,000 in terms of financial impact on the revenue side of things. In terms of increased expenditures related to COVID, I mentioned in my last report related to technology, telecommunications, signage, additional cleaning supplies. Those costs are being tracked and monitored, and at this time, I think in the area of about $5,000, not really material yet, but there are some costs being considered in terms of expenditures presented in the reopening framework document coming from the working group to the emergency control group. So we do anticipate that those COVID-related expenditure increases to increase in the near future and will be part of my next report in July. Actual cost containment savings are estimated again in attachment one as per previous reports, certainly with the deferral of hiring some seasonal staff and obviously now working towards our reopening framework and hiring some of those seasonal contract workers. I think once that happens and we know exactly how much of our seasonal staff will be hired back versus they will not be hired in 2020, as well as some budget analysis being currently being done based on senior managers reviewing their 2020 budget to see where they can individually within each department make some purposeful cost containment efforts. So again, any of those major impacts in terms of actual cost containment efforts moving forward will be included in an upcoming COVID financial impact report as well. In terms of the scenarios on the potential estimated financial impacts included in attachment one, potential revenue losses are based on three different scenarios depending on the longevity and the severity of the pandemic. So scenario one, two, and three has been updated and presented as attachment one. The revenue losses are estimated in the range of $127,000 to about $636,000. The cost containments are estimated in the range of savings of $301,000 to $417,000. The net result of that is estimated surplus or deficit in the range of $173,000 surplus in scenario one to a deficit, an estimated potential net deficit of $219,000 on the other end of the scenarios in scenario number three. Again, updated to be a little bit more conservative in terms of financial impact. I think last time I presented it to committee, it was some of the cost containment efforts were over a four-month period. Now that the province has lifted some restrictions, opened, started reopening, phasing in the reopening for businesses and getting back to work. My estimate was change from four-month impact down to a three-month impact, just considering some of those announcements as we gear towards reopening ourselves. So, and also to be conservative. So again, a net impact ranging to no deficit in scenario one and two, to scenario three, a potential deficit of $219,000. Again, funding options available for council consideration is included in the attachment, totaling approximately $428,000 to offset any net potential deficit at year end. Also included in the report is a staff recommendation related to providing additional financial relief measures to Penetang Machine property owners related to their property tax and utility bills. So currently, council had approved waiving penalties and interest on water and tax bills until July 31st, and that was only on the second interim installment that was due April 30th. So that was for a 90-day period. Municipalities are revisiting the financial relief related to property tax and water bills and either extending their due dates or extending the waiving of penalties and interest. So in option number one within the report, which is the staff recommendation, which is to waive penalties and interest on tax installment, number three and number four, which are due respectively July 31st and September 30th, and to waive penalties and interest for a period of two months. In addition, utility bills that fall due within August 1st and November 30th, that penalties be waived for 60 days. And that any NSF charges that might come, that might be incurred to December 31st be waived. So in effect, we're basically giving some financial relief in terms of penalties and interest on any late payments for a 60-day period following the end of the initial approval that council gave to the end of July 31st. But in effect, still trying to keep collecting all the payments on their normal due dates because the due dates don't change. And as I mentioned at last, in my last report, at the last meeting, including our pre-authorized payment participants, as well as those that paid their second interim tax installment, 90% of our second second interim installment taxes were paid, with only 10% unpaid and 7% is typically the norm. So 3%, I think, took advantage of paying a little bit later based on the waiving of penalties and interest. Also included in the report are other options that our local neighboring North Simcoe municipalities are doing with the extension of their final tax bills and water bills for the rest of the year. And the recommendation to waive the penalties and interest and NSF charges as outlined in the report is anticipated to cost approximately $10,000. Again, based on the typical percentage of people that are usually in arrears or are going to take advantage of the waiving of penalties and interest and delay their payment. So there is a cost to us. However, it is separate from, and I just thought I would remind committee that it is separate from the additional financial relief measures throughout 2020 that have been made, including the tax reduction or the tax rate reduction itself of 1.2% that council approved and put $131,000 back into the hands of property owners. And I think that's it. So I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Members of council, any questions of our treasurer? Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any questions? Okay, so thank you for your presentation and summary, Madam Treasurer. So I'm going to read the motion that report Finance 2020-13 COVID-19 Overview Financial Impacts, Update Number Three, be received for information. And that property tax penalties on August 1st, 2020, and September 1st, 2020, for the third tax installment that is due on July 31st, 2020, be waived. And that property tax penalties on October 1st, 2020, and November 1st, 2020, on the third tax installment that is due September 30th, 2020, be waived. And that penalties on water wastewater bills that fall between August 1st, 2020, and November 30th, 2020, be waived for 60 days. And further, then NSF charges for payments that are returned from August 1st, 2020, December 31st, 2020, be waived. And finally, that the clerk be directed to bring forward the necessary bylaw for council approval. So that's the motion. May I have a mover, please, for that motion? Counselor Rose, a seconder, Counselor Levy, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Your worship, I believe that's it for, oh, no, I'm just going to go back up to my agenda here for a second and see what referrals we have. We have the referrals to upcoming agenda. We have the Huroni Airport Commission Joint Business Operation Review, and that is Q3 2020. Are there any additional items to add to the referrals list? Seeing none, may I have a mover then for, oh, sorry. Counselor Clu.
All right.
Go ahead.
Fell asleep at the wheel there. Given the resolution that we made earlier this evening in council about joining the Coalition for Inclusive Municipalities, I'm hoping that we can add an item to the referrals list whereby staff would provide us a report on what. Where staff would provide a report on what it would look like to join the coalition and what work, obviously, in that report would include what work needs to come out of it.
Sorry, Counselor, I didn't hear the first part because the screen froze. So maybe you could just repeat that. So, thank you.
I'm looking to add referrals item about the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, whereby we would receive a staff report detailing how it looks, what we have to do to officially join the coalition. We didn't actually do that tonight. Tonight was the first step to say we're looking to move forward with that, and we would need a staff report to come back to say this is how we do it. Perhaps there's a working group, I'm not sure. The report would detail the next steps to do that and the official resolution to join the coalition.
Okay, thank you. So that deals with the first three headings. The item, key deliverable, and the council member that's suggesting it, the expected date. Do we ask staff to put that, to insert that? Is that something, I see the clerk nodding, so we just leave it with staff and staff insert the appropriate date after discussing internally, determine what's to be done? Stacy, oh, there she is, okay. Madam Clerk, did you want to comment on that, or Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I think your comments are very accurate in terms of the timings. So at our next agenda, we'll come back with proposed timing. I think, and then at that point, if committee would like to expedite it, then we can have that conversation around how that looks. But I think I, I don't think what Counselor Clu is asking for will take a ton of time. And certainly, we can chat about the timing at a staff level, and I think we probably can can make this happen, you know, relatively quickly.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Any other items to add to the referral? So we have the one additional item for a total of two. So I'll read the motion that Finance and Corporate Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. May I have a mover for that, please? Counselor Sanama, a seconder, Counselor Levy, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Question period for the meeting of the public? I don't believe we have any. So your worship, I'm going to turn it back to you. You're on mute, I believe.
Yes, I was. Okay, yeah. Thank you, Counselor Vatavonkhar. And with that, we are adjourned, and so we're ready to go. Call to order, and if anyone has a declaration of peoniori interest, and may so do now or at the appropriate time, I would move on to the approval of the agenda, the special counsel agenda of June 10, 2020. That the agenda of the special counsel meeting of June 10, 2020 be approved as presented. Mover? Counselor Mayat, a seconder, Counselor LaRose, all in favor? Okay, I'm carried, and so we will move on to, I have four, which is in-camera items. Convene in closed session that in accordance with the Town of Penetang Machine Procedural Bylaw 2019-25, the council of the Town of Penetang Machine move into an in-camera session to discuss a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, labor relations or employee negotiations, litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality or local board, including matters before administrative tribunals, and advice is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. So with that, we are going to deal with two items. The first one is the County Road 93 Award Drain Cleanout, and the second will be a verbal update from the Chief Administrative Officer, RSCDSB, Surplus Property, 51 Dunlop Street, Penetang Machine, former PSS. So starting, do I need, we need a motion to arise from both sessions? A motion to arise from both sessions that the Council of the Town of Penetang Machine rise from in-camera session with report? Mover, Counselor Sanama, the seconder, Counselor Cummings, and we're all in favor. So we are now back into open session, and reports on in-camera meeting held. So County Road 93 Award Drain Cleanout, a mover and a seconder that we move on this with option two. Counselor Cummings and Counselor Levy, all in favor. And I think on the verbal update from the Chief Administrative Officer, I don't believe a motion is required for that one. So with that, fellow counselors, we are adjourned, and I wish you all a good week, or the rest of it, and a good weekend, and hopefully nothing urgent arises before July, the, what is it, next meeting, the 10th, I believe, or 9th?
July the 8th, your worship.
July the 8th, and so if not, hopefully maybe run into you before then. If not, we'll see you all on July the 8th. With that, have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.